Five thirty P M. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. If I could please have a roll call.
Commissioner Brewer, Commissioner McDaniel.
Here.
Commissioner McCowan, Commissioner Jablonsky.
Here.
Commissioner Byrd.
Here.
Commissioner McClure.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Kendall.
Here.
And Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Give a quorum.
Starting with our consent items. Item number one, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of the minutes as follows. Planning Commission meeting minutes of September eleventh, twenty twenty five. Item number two, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement for SFP two-five-two-six dash one, consideration of short form plat submitted by K N L Properties LLC, Golden Land Surveying for twenty twenty West Lindsay, Block B Hilltop Edition located at twenty twenty West Lindsay Street. Item number three, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement for COS dash two-five-two-six dash two, consideration of Norman Rural Certificate of Survey submitted by Boog Knight's Properties LLC, Arcoma Surveying and Mapping for Gregory Estates generally located one quarter mile east of one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue Northeast on the north side of Indian Hills Road. And item number four, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement for COS dash two-five-two-six dash three, with a variance in the minimum with requirement measured at the front building setback from three hundred and thirty feet to two hundred and seventy-five point nine eight feet for tracks one and two, and a variance in the ten acres requirement from ten acres to nine point six one acres, consideration of Norman Rules Certificate of Survey submitted by William Harless Golden Land Surveying for Roadrunner Estates for property located at fifty-four oh one Alameda Street. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. All votes have been cast and it carries seven to zero.
Moving to non-consent items. Item number five and six to be read together. Item number five, consideration of approval, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-four-two-five dash three-eight in ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six dash two-oh-one of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove the east half of the northwest quarter of section two township eight north range two west of the Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the A two rural agricultural district and place the same in a PUD planned unit development and providing for the severability thereof, south of East Lindsay Street between thirty-sixth Avenue and Forty-eighth Avenue Southeast. Item number six, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP dash two-four-two-five dash twelve, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Premium Land LLC for Ironwood Hills planned unit development for seventy-seven point nine seven acres of property generally located, south of East Lindsay Street between thirty-sixth Avenue Southeast and Forty-eighth Avenue Southeast. These items have been withdrawn by the applicant. Moving now to items number seven and eight to be read together. Item number seven, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-five-two-six dash six, in ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six dash two-oh-one of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove the southwest quarter of section four township eight north range two west of the Indian Meridian to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the A two rural agricultural district and I one light industrial district and place the same in a PUD planned unit development and providing for the severability thereof, seventeen fifty-one East Imhoff Road. And item number eight, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP dash two-five-two-six dash seven, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Foster Family Living Trust, Crafton Toll and Associates, Inc., for coal rain multifamily, a planned unit development for property generally located fifteen hundred feet east of Classen Boulevard on the north side of Imhoff Road. And I would take the staff presentation.
Hello, Laura Hoggett with the Planning Department. So I'll spare you reading this entire slide, but we have a rezoning to a planned unit development to allow for the development of thirty-two and a half acres for a multifamily apartment complex for a total of four hundred and fifty-six units. So the site is currently A two with a little chunk of I one on the southeast corner. So the site is currently vacant. To the west are a few apartment complexes, and then to the east there's single family and some multifamily on the northeast corner there. So the AIM land use designation is urban high, and there's urban high to the west and then urban medium to the north and the east with job center to the south. Just an aerial of the property. And then here's one Kelly made. She's not here tonight, but kind of labeling where we have single family, multifamily. You can see Hitachi is across the street to the south, and then the two parks are shown. This is from the park board meeting that they had. And then we did receive some protests for a total of four point three percent within the notification area. Staffs available for questions, and the applicant has a presentation as well.
Thank you. Any questions by commission for staff? Is there any improvements to the road? I know that one of the protest letters we received had referenced a light pole at the intersection that had been a little bit out of date. Are there any city anticipated improvements on roadways in this area?
I will let public breaks answer that.
Todd McClellan, Development Engineer. As part of this development, they're required to do the widening of Imhoff Road in front of their property along the frontage there. So that's what they're required to do.
Thank you. And if you had not already heard the note about the light pole, if you will also get with planning staff for that one.
Well, if there's a light pole in the way, then they're gonna be required to relocate it.
Thank you. Any other questions by commission for staff? Seeing none, I would take the applicant presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent. Good evening, Commissioners Gunnar Joyce on behalf of the applicant and Crafton Toll, Braden Shafer, the Civil Engineers here as well. Laura really touched on a lot of it, but the only thing I think I would start with that she didn't is you're gonna see a student housing project. We do a lot of student housing projects. This is the greenest one I think I've ever got to show you. So this is a substantial commitment to green space, tree plantings, and really also, before I dive too deep into it, I'd also like to call out at the pre-development meeting for this, there's a very substantial turnout, and we heard a lot of comments from the neighbors in the single-family neighborhood to the east. And this applicant has made a very conscious effort to preserve as much green space on that eastern border as they can. So when I go through the slides, I think you'll really be able to see, first, how impressive it is, a commitment to green space, and second, all the densities and buildings are pulled to the south and to the west as much as we can make it happen, where you have adjacencies of apartment buildings already. So just wanna call those two things out as we proceed forward. The existing zoning, the nuts and bolts, it's A two, but as you see around it, everything is really already developed out. So this is a very interesting site in Norman that you don't typically see with agricultural zoning, but this is infill development. So all around it, we have multifamily, we have Hitachi to the south, Lenar came through, I think it was eighteen months ago we did that rezoning, and then you see the single-family housing to the north and to the east. And so this is a infill development property for thirty-two and a half acres, and the proposal aligns directly with the newly adopted AIM future use designation for this site. So the entire site is urban high density, which essentially is exactly what we were proposing, high-density multifamily apartments on the site. All right, we're changing orientation because I want to show you the site plan where I think you can see most visually the details. So north is now my left-hand side of the screen, Imhoff to the right, and you can see right there already all the intensity in the buildings really line the west property line. The only building that is on the east is as far south as they could bring it, and that building is a three-story building. So we have dropped that building from four stories in initial design meetings with that client. They now are showing that as three stories, along with the other building that is on Imhoff. So both those are three stories. The next three buildings as we go north along that western edge are all proposed at four stories and then three stories for the final two to the north. So three and four-story buildings proposed there. It's planned as a two-phase development. Overall, the request is four hundred and fifty-six units. It shakes out to about two hundred and seventy, and then a hundred and eighty, give or take a few, between first phase and second phase. So this is the first phase, the southern half of the property along Imhoff. This is the second phase, the northern half, and you can already see as we move north, you can see that very large buffer along the eastern edge, and that northeast corner is really planned to be left alone and left natural as much as we can. There is a lot of wooded trees right there in that spot. We want to keep that as natural as we can, serve as a natural buffer to the east and keep this site green. We also, along the north edge, that is our proposed detention pond. So really, the entire north area is detention and open space, and then the density of the building pulled as far west as we can. So there's the green space. You can visually see it. Typically, when you talk housing, single-family, duplex, multifamily, that magic number for impervious under the code is sixty-five percent impervious coverage, gives you what, thirty-five percent of impervious allowances. You can see our numbers there, fifty-seven percent pervious, and impervious is only forty-two percent. So that is a substantial commitment. It's a project that I don't think I've been able to present that type of number to you before with a fifty-seven percent pervious area. In addition to that very green development, we have a landscape plan that calls out the detailed types of species that would come in. They're all under the city's approved ordinances for tree list and planting list. But collectively, under both phases, it calls out for four hundred and twenty-six new trees to be brought to the site in addition to over fifty-five percent of pervious coverage. So again, a very substantially green project. Where at the end, there are a lot of amenities that are proposed within. It is a purpose-built student housing project by developers that do this all over the country. So the types of amenities are the ones that the students would utilize the most. There's study rooms, there's workout facilities, there's game rooms. There's also substantial exterior amenities. As you can kind of see, the courtyard in between the buildings, if you go from Imhoff and work north, that kind of activity area east of the buildings to the west, you can see like a basketball court there, courtyards, open space, a lot of amenities proposed, both indoor and outdoor. Along that kind of line of thought, Parks Board has unanimously approved a request for fee and lieu here. So money would be going from this developer to the city to utilize in nearby parks. But in addition to that, as we worked with parks, we have proposed a pedestrian walkway. So you might be able to see it. Let's go to the green space. I think that's the best. Up there on that eastern border where you can see us pulled away and probably, you know, the most green, that connection, that little gray line going to our project and connecting to Twisted Oak Drive is a pedestrian walkway so that neighbors here, the residents of this project could utilize that to walk to the existing public park that's just right in that neighborhood. So there's direct pedestrian access to the existing park. Fee and lieu is being proposed, so additional money going to the city for park improvements and private amenities throughout, both inside the buildings and exterior. As Laura mentioned, I think the development group has done a lot to ease concerns that we did hear pre-development, but that was a very large turnout and a lively discussion. This plan only has four point three protest percentage. I think that shows some of the efforts and mitigation efforts that this developer has proposed. And this is just the summary. Unanimous Parks Board approval, substantial commitment to green space, and from the staff report, it acknowledges that we are in line with AIM and compatible with some of the surrounding uses. So with that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Moving to commission questions for the applicant.
Oh, wait, one second.
Oh, thank you. A quick question for you. So I'm looking at this green space on the east. Is that planned to be untouched and left wooded? Because the reason I ask is there were concerns from the neighbors that they're gonna be looking up and seeing these large buildings, but I imagine that if it were left forested, this would help cover the view.
Commissioner, you've nailed it. So that's our goal, is to keep as much natural vegetation there as possible because it serves as an excellent buffer right now. If you've been there or you want to go to Google or Street Views, you'll see that it is very heavily treed. It's a phenomenal buffer. There will be some grading activities, so obviously that pedestrian access that we proposed there, that will require some trees to go down, grading work, and obviously, some of the parking lots, and as we move south, a lot of that area will have dirt work and grading activities, but it is certainly the intent to preserve as much as we can because that's a phenomenal buffer in place already.
Thank you. Any other questions by commissioners? Seeing none, we would move to audience comments. And for this item, I'm gonna call up Alan Tullius and Helen Todd. If you've not previously come up to speak before, we will give you three minutes to speak. If you would like a thirty-second warning before your time is up, let me know. Otherwise, I'll lead you the full time, and then thank you at the end. At that end, it'll be time to step away. Also, please state your name and address into the record at the start.
My name is Alan Tullius. I'm here for my aunt Helen Todd, sixteen hundred East Imhoff, which is cat a corner from property on the other side of the road. Her main concern, and that's why I'm here, she's, her health is preventing her from coming tonight. Her main concern was, and I think the engineer touched on it, they're talking about widening Imhoff, so that's gonna be adding one more lane? That's gonna be all on your side? Okay. That was her main concern, because back when Hitachi moved in and they widened the road from two lane to four lane, they took everything on her side. And she wanted to make sure that somebody on the other side had to give up something. So, and that was her main concern. The rest of it, she knows is no good fighting. She's not real happy about the apartments going in, but that's progress. So I'm done. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I have Paige, I'm sorry, Dollidge. I apologize. Oh, great. I'm sorry. If we have somebody else who'd like to come up? Yeah, just come up and state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. My name is David Gansberry, twenty-one, twenty-four, Oak Vista Circle. Live right around the corner from this addition, also the Ward One, city councilman also. I do want to thank the people that are presenting the topic tonight and everything. They did have me over and showed me a lot of things and answered a lot of questions. After that, I was able to go back and have some meetings and stuff with the residents that live right behind the wall over there that's gonna kind of be in that green buffer there. And I just want to make sure that I get their voice heard and the fact that they want to make sure that as much as those trees that can be guaranteed to be preserved are preserved. They're also worried about our natural creek line that runs back there that's getting really messed up with all the construction over there with the flow, with our wildlife that we're used to seeing. They're worried about when you come up with that parking lot on that backside there, just making sure that we keep the integrity of the water flow down to the creek that runs through there, make sure that we keep everything flowing the way it's supposed to flow with the stormwater, everything else in that area. I do want to point out that they have compromised also with the request of the mayor. It was originally three entrances into the facility, and they was able to get it down to two. So that's very nice of them. To the street lighting question, the street lighting question actually sits on the corner of Oakhurst and Imhoff. It's actually on a different property than this one, but it is a concern of all the citizens over there about how much street lighting we have in general on that Imhoff, especially with three new housing additions going in over there also. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other audience comments? Seeing none, I'd move to Planning Commission discussion. I'll turn on all mics for this.
I'll say a little something. I agree. It's nice to see a higher-density project that's trying to maintain some green space. Several commissioners have commented on the need to have habitat inside the city. It's important. It's important for the natural life, but also for, you know, quality of life for the people who live in the city. And yes, there are some species of birds that are gonna need to live in grasslands. You know, it's hard to get around that, but you're leaving a lot of forested land. So it doesn't just help protect the view, it gives habitat to a lot of wildlife. So I think that's wonderful. Also, as I'm looking at this, you know, there might be an added bonus where people from the neighborhood can use this walking path to actually get more access to the forested area also. So it's not just gonna help the development to get access to the park. I think it looks like a great project.
Thank you.
I have one quick question. With the walking path, I love it, but can we put a note or something in the plans that allows the contractor to kind of find a natural path, maybe? I mean, get in there with the, yeah, dozer, they're gonna knock a bunch of stuff down, but if there's a natural, might be kind of nice.
I personally love that. So if you guys want to make that recommendation, we probably get some language in the PUD before we get to city council to that effect. Absolutely. Thank you.
What's a point of order for city staff? Would something like that be within a tolerance that the city could approve on a updated plan if it was a small variation instead of being a straight line to be a slightly curved path for something like that?
I'm thinking, this is going to be hard. I mean, we can put something in the narrative, but I think it would probably be something, I'm kind of looking back at engineering, actually, for Todd, is this something that we could say that engineering staff would meet on-site to review the location and select the best, the most appropriate location? Sorry, Todd, I mean to put you on the spot, but I just don't know how we would do that in as far as the zoning.
We'd be happy to meet with the developers out there to do that, but don't forget, we need to have an easement for it, too. So it has to go in the easement.
So, I mean, just in this discussion, is this maybe something that could be handled outside of the actual PUD document and be a discussion point item from Planning Commission and be within your capability for the city to make a small adjustment on for the site plan instead?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Putting it on the plat just as an easement?
Yes.
Okay.
When it's final platted, we may have to do some adjustments with that easement, depending on where it's gonna go.
Commissioner, would that address your concerns if we left that as a Planning Commission discussion item? And it sounds like the applicant would be pleased with that, too. So any other discussion on that? It's a great point. Thank you. Any other Planning Commission discussion?
I just want to comment that I love that this project, when doing the in lieu of for parks, because of the proximity to the parks, that they made sure that there was walkability to the park. Because oftentimes, we see that, yes, there's a, as a crow flies, the park is really close, but then when it gets to actual walkability, it's, it can be very dangerous. You wouldn't want to just send, you know, your kids out or whatever. And I know that it's gonna be primarily college students, but, but again, if we've got families taking a walk through the woods as well, I really like that it goes both ways and that, that it's preserving as much of the natural habitat as possible. So those are the things that I really, really like about this project.
Thank you. Any other Planning Commission discussion? I'll save our time because I had similar comments. So moving on, I would take a motion regarding the item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I would take a vote.
All votes have been cast and it carries seven to zero.
Moving to item number ten, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-five-two-six dash one-four in ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six dash two-oh-one of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove part of the northeast quarter of section six township eight north range two west of, to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the R one single-family dwelling district and place the same in spud simple planned unit development and providing for the severability thereof, eleven oh seven and eleven eleven South Chautauqua Avenue. And I would take the staff presentation. Oh, I'm so sorry. If I could just speak something into the record before we move along, I failed to hit item number nine. Item number nine was consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-five-two-six dash one-three in ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six dash two-oh-one of the Code of the City of Norman so as to grant special use for the sorority house in the R three multifamily dwelling district for the northeast of section six township eight north range two west of the Indian Meridian, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, providing for the severability thereof, fourteen oh one College Avenue. The applicant requests postponement to the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. Again, that is the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. I would take a motion on that item.
I move that we postpone this to the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we can vote.
You may vote.
Don't catch me on those very often.
All votes have been cast and it.
And thank you to the staff. I'm gonna go ahead and read it one more time for posterity. Item number ten, consideration of approval, acceptance, rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two-five-two-six dash one-four in ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending section thirty-six dash two-oh-one of the Code of the City of Norman so as to remove part of the northeast quarter of section six township eight north range two west of the, to Norman, Cleveland County, Oklahoma, from the R one single-family dwelling district and place the same in spud simple planned unit development and providing for the severability thereof, eleven oh seven and eleven eleven South Chautauqua Avenue. Staff application. Thanks.
Hello, Justin Fitch of the Plan Department. As stated, we have an application from Cradle Investments LLC and Peacock Designs for rezoning from R one single-family dwelling district. for rezoning from R1 single-family dwelling district to SPUD, simple planned unit development, 40 properties at 1111 and 1107 South Chautauqua Avenue. So, the developer is proposing a three-story microunit apartment building with 24 units. The site will feature a parking lot with 21 spaces and five bicycle racks for the residents. To achieve this design, the applicant has requested rezoning from R1 to SPUD. Right here is the existing zoning for the area. There is R3 located on the south and to the east of the property, with R1 directly north and R1 across the street, Chautauqua Avenue, to the west. These are the existing land uses. There was a multifamily development to the east of the property where those three large buildings are, but that has since been demolished. Directly south is more multifamily and then there's R1 located to the west and to the north. Just single-family homes. Under Aim Norman, it is designated as urban medium. An aerial photo of the area. This is a location map. There is a couple of churches along, I believe that's Lindsay to the north. There is Lions Park north, taking Chautauqua Avenue. You can head north and then take a left and then head north again to get to Lions Park. And to the south is Walnut Ridge Park. They're both about a mile away from the development site. The city did receive a protest map. However, we can only show one property that was listed on this map at this time because signatures were not collected for the other property owners that were on the protest map. So, the map will be updated between now and City Council to reflect the updated version of that protest map. Currently, there's a protest of 3.4%. With that, staff will forward this, request the Planning Commission for consideration and recommendation to City Council. Staff is available for comments and the applicant is also available for any comments and has a presentation.
Thank you. Any questions by commissioners for the city staff? Okay, seeing none, we take the applicant presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Matt Peacock with Peacock Design, here representing the applicant, Cradle Investments. I want to thank staff first for giving a pretty great overview. They're gonna cover a lot of things. I have in my slides here, I'll try not to belabor the point too much, but the one, a couple of key things that I did want to point out is that this property is on Chautauqua and as you can see on the screen, east of Chautauqua is pretty well already established as a more dense multifamily kind of strip there. You can see Aim Norman 2845 contemplates this area to be urban medium and so we feel that this request is appropriate and context-specific. Here is a street view of the two properties. You can see they both currently share one large driveway. There's about 65% impervious coverage on the site already. Here is our site plan. You can see that we show it's rear-loaded, I'm sorry, front-loaded with rear parking. There's an access drive to the south of the property. One of the things we're asking, or the reason we're doing a spud is to make that drive a 20-foot drive instead of the required 24-foot drive. That allowed us to squeeze in as, as much units as possible. You can see in the back, we've got 21 parking spaces for 24 units. We show infiltration trenches in the parking lot to handle the stormwater and we also show the green buffer along the back where we'll have cutouts, curb cutouts to allow the stormwater to infiltrate into that buffer and sort of pre-treat before it hits the, hits the stormwater. These are 330 square foot microunits. This is a product that doesn't currently exist in Norman and we feel really positive this is gonna bring something that we don't have in our ecosystem currently. This project is geared for young professionals. The person that has graduated, no longer wants to have roommates, but not quite necessarily ready to purchase a house in the suburbs, set down roots. And so we want to give them an option to have a one-bedroom microunit, self-contained where they've got their own laundry facilities, kitchenette, really make it a self-contained unit so they can have their privacy and their autonomy, but still have the campus feel and the walkability and all the great things that come with living in that area. And this is what the exterior looks like. We really tried to go with a historic collegiate feel. Still working through some of the choices on the brick colors, but this is what we've landed on as of date. You can see three stories. Every bedroom has its egress window, lots of natural light, you know, great, great street presence, walkability, bikeability, providing onsite bike racks and everything. And with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Moving to questions for the applicant by commissioners.
I've, I've got a real quick question. Can you go back to the, I think that was the first slide? That slide, so it's, it's urban medium. What's the definition, maybe that's, what's the definition of urban medium, I guess?
It's a unit per acre and I can't tell you what the number is.
Okay.
Eight.
Eight, and so, this, is this?
Or more.
Eight or more? Is this consistent with that designation?
Yes.
Okay. And then, and can you talk a little bit about the setbacks?
Yes, so we are going with the existing five-foot setback on the north side of the property. We have a, I believe it's a 25-foot setback on the south side and that is to allow for the driveline. It's a 75-foot setback off the rear of the property to allow for all the parking and I believe it's a 11-foot setback off the front of the property. And that actually, that 11-foot setback came, the developer met with the mayor and some city council members prior to my involvement in the project and that was their request, that we bring the project as close to the road as physically possible without creating a negative condition on the adjacent properties. Now, we, they have, they have a vision that, you know, as this gets redeveloped, buildings get close to the road, you get a better street presence from all the properties and so this is starting that.
And based upon your knowledge, that would still allow the visual?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions by commission for the applicant?
I know there, there are 24 units?
Yes, sir.
And designed for a single individual specifically, and only 21 parking spaces?
Yes, and we are in the negotiation with two separate properties to try to get some off-site leased long-term spaces. Those conversations are moving slowly, I'll acknowledge that, but we are having them feel good about it. If those fall through, we've got a couple of other plans. One being charging a premium for the spots and basically giving the option to the residents of foregoing a parking spot and foregoing having a car, essentially. And so, it's gonna be their choice to have an added expense or to embrace the walkability and the density of the area. Again, that's the whole point of building in this spot is you've got access to just some great amenities where you could exist with walking, biking, ride shares and never really have to own a car.
Okay, I wish you luck on that one.
But in all, in all transparency, I mean, the developer wants to fully park the site. I mean, he knows that for every unit you don't have a parking spot for, it's harder to rent that unit. And so, he very much wants to fulfill the parking need. It's just, if, you've got to find a balance of, do you want a parking lot on your site or do you want the units? And we, we opted for the units. Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you. One more question for you. It looks like there's no recycling. Why, it seems like an odd choice.
The city did not allow us to put recycling on this. They allowed us to do polycarts instead of a dumpster, but can't state exactly why they didn't want recycling. They just said that it wasn't allowed on this property.
Maybe the city staff could answer this for me?
It's more of a multifamily designation. They do not offer the individual polycarts for recycling within the multifamily designations and as the applicant said, realistically, you know, we would like to see dumpsters located in these situations, but because we do want to keep this as a residential area and not have dumpsters coming and being emptied at all hours, we, we wanted them to be able to have the polycarts.
The dumpster really limited our onsite. I mean, we didn't have the space to provide a truck turnaround and the city staff did not want us having a garbage truck backing out onto a busy street and so that's why we went with polycarts as well. I personally would love to see recycling over there if it was.
But it's, I mean, it's the same size, like, bin, right? Like, one's green, one's blue.
If this, I, I will say this, if the city would allow it, we are open to providing it.
Okay, thanks. Asked and answered, thank you.
On that note, could you pull up your site plan that shows your polycarts? So, they're in the lower right corner there. Just in your design expertise, had they moved to a dumpster, would you have had to remove an additional parking spot to do so?
We would have lost probably eight to nine parking spaces because you've got to provide a full turnaround and there's just not the maneuverability on the site.
So, it would have compounded the parking problem further?
Yes. We really did try to strike a balance in the size of the project, with the number of parking spaces we're allowed. You know, we really tried to thread the needle as best as possible. That's really kind of the reason for the three stories, is to have less of a footprint and more of a vertical presence.
Do you have any other, any other comments on that item before we move on? Okay.
And what's the closest recycle drop-off to this? Do we know, like, a distance?
There is one over by the Salvation Army that is up Lindsay. So, it has, takes cardboard, other.
Okay, so still closer than Ward Five has to travel? Okay, perfect.
Compact car parking and get them, narrowing them up?
We did. We weren't able to count those as full-size regular spots. I've got kind of some leftover spaces where the, where the polycarts currently are. I probably could have gotten motorcycle parking or a compact there, but we were short three units, or three spots. Getting an extra one is still short too, so we opted against it.
I agree. I would love to see any functional way to have turned those parallel spots into angled parking spots to add those units. I would really love to see a parking spot per bedroom on there. So if there was any way to functionally make that happen in site design, I would love to see that and it sounds like the developer would too.
Yes, and we, we looked at all possibilities and in fact, the only way that you could meet the parking requirement is to actually push the building to the back of the property and put the parking in front, which eliminates the access drive and then you're able to fit in a lot more spaces in that 20-foot zone. You could also tandem park them at that point, but we, we didn't feel like that was a product or a, a project that, you know, Planning Commission or the City Council would want to support and it's quite frankly, not a project that I would want to design.
Is there any possibility of putting bike racks in the front of the building to add additional bike racks? Or, you know, possibly create one more parallel spot there? Or providing just additional bike racks too?
So, I think, you know, again, striking a balance. If we were to remove those part, or those bike spaces and add a spot there, you would probably lose two trees as a trade-off and so I think it's a question of what priorities are. I mean, if we, if, if the parking spot is that highly valued and the success of the project hinges on it, we would explore that, but I think preference would be to keep trees and green space as much as possible. We tried to put them along the back row of the property, but we just, without bringing the, the building anymore forward, we were really limited in that planning strip. I think it's four feet, it's three feet. You really can't grow a tree in that successfully, so.
Yeah, thank you. I would just love to see a few more bike racks or availability too for this particular project or some sort of internal storage, garage storage to allow somebody to hang a bike or something inside.
We do have some under-stair space that's underutilized, I think would be perfect for that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I, we leave, we have some audience comments.
Thank you.
I have Michael Carter. Just a reminder, if you will please come and state your name and address into the record and if you would like a 30-second warning, please let me know. Otherwise, I will give you the full, full three minutes and then thank you for your comments at the end.
Before I get started, would it be possible to put the plat up there that showed the zoning of the various lots of the neighborhood?
Yes, I need somebody to help us. Thank you, Mr. Peacock.
My pleasure. Yes, that's what I'm looking for, thank you, no problem. And also, may I ask, did the, did the commissioners get the letter of protest?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so you, I don't have to repeat what's in that, hopefully. We'll presume we've read it because three minutes is not very much time. I'm a lawyer, so I'm used to talking a lot and I'm gonna have to really curb it for three minutes. All right, I'm ready.
All right, so name and address, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I was very interested in the previous submissions when they talked about.
Would you mind just starting with your name and address?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Michael Carter, 1124 Chautauqua, across the street from this.
Thank you.
I was interested in the previous presentation. They talked about a pre-development meeting where they had a large attendance and a lot of comment and a lot of good discussion. Because we didn't have one. There has, there hasn't been a pre-develop meeting, meeting for this. It may not be legally required, but certainly the developers have talked to the mayor and have talked to council people about this project, but not one single neighbor has been spoken to about this. I, I think that's pretty outrageous, quite frankly. I would like this commission, before I speak more, to consider, if you can, and I don't know the, the process here, to at least postpone this, if not outright deny it, until we have a chance to talk to the developer. And in the interest of transparency, Cradle Investments is Hunter Miller. And Mr. Miller, as you probably know, owns hundreds of rent houses in Norman and in Oklahoma City area. They are R1 rent houses like this, simple, small houses, live three or four people in them. We've never had any issues with them. We all live close to campus. We know there are trade-offs to living close to campus. You've got more traffic, you've got more people, you've got more noise. But this takes it over the top. It's a little bit misleading to talk about how this is all R3. If you look on the west of Chautauqua, it's all R1. The one lot that is not R1 is the beautiful Art Deco home that has a garage apartment on it. It's as, it's as R1 as you can get, even though it's designated as R3. So this is our neighborhood, right across the street, from 24 brand-new bedrooms, 24 new fraternity members. There's not gonna be any young professionals living in this, I promise you. Just next to that is the Beta Party House and next to that is another house where a bunch of ATOs live. This will be 24 fraternity members, all of which have giant pickups and they're all gonna park there, or actually where they'll really park is on Hoover. On the side of Hoover, that is not restricted parking from eight to five, which is the south side. Press and Plow already jams up. If you've been there, probably been there, it's a great place. It's walkable from my house, speaking of walkability, and we like to go there. But there are cars all the way down La Homa and all the way across Wilson Street, every single morning. So, and then when the Betas have their guests and their parties and the kids that live in the other house next to the Beta Party House, it's, all of those cars just flood our neighborhood. 24 cars without adequate parking, 85% non-permeable in this addition. 85%. I helped develop the ATO fraternity house down the street. We had to fight like crazy to get a variance to have 68%. So why are we gonna just roll over for 85% with this project?
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it and before we, we move on, I just want to remind that their, the applicant's information should be available for any member of the audience who cares to communicate. And in addition, after Planning Commission, there will be two follow-up meetings provided by the city. First will be the first reading by City Council. That won't be a meeting to necessarily present the item or speak on it. It just reads it into the record. Then the second meeting following that, the second reading is when there will be an additional time for public comment. There's additional round for protest letters or other such letters to be provided. When you get those in, we get them in in our materials and City Council does similarly. So there will be additional time also to make comments that way in between and your City Council members also do have contact information available on the city website too for additional comments to be made. So, just wanted to add that there are additional ways to make some communications outside of this meeting as well. I see we have some other audience members. Did anybody else care to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I would move to Planning Commission discussion. I will turn on all the microphones for this. Is there any discussion on this item?
I'll say a few things. In principle, I like this kind of project. These micro-units are, are something fresh. You know, I, I think there are a lot of people who would be happy to live in a small apartment. And one thing that does bother me though is the, the amount of impervious surface. That's a lot of impervious surface. And I agree, we're trying to densify and do infill development, so you're trying to strike a balance, but that's a lot of impervious surface.
Any other discussion?
I have a similar concern about this, the scale of the amount of micro-units on the space available. And I, and I am disappointed that there wasn't necessarily pre-development invitation to talk with the neighbors before. I know it's not necessarily required. It's highly encouraged. And in most cases, when there are such events, we find that the developer and applicant and the neighbors are able to really have a good conversation and a cohesive, supportive community really, as that development proceeds forward. There is time, you know, to still reach out and discuss and address concerns. But those are my comments.
I have some other discussion items, if there's none others. One thing that we talked about in the last meeting was setbacks. One thing I noted was that this property had an 11-foot setback. What you may not be aware, or it's harder to tell on here, is that it appears the roadway easement maybe allows for an additional lane. So there actually is more green space that is off of this property site place too, and a further setback that is the piece of land that is not currently developed into a road, but could be developed into a road that is not part of this property line. So I just wanted to mention that too, because we talked about how far a setback should be for new code items. And in this example, without having cars in the front, that we would be worried about park, covering a, a sidewalk. I think an 11-foot compared to 25 is a pretty reasonable example of what we're kind of talking about, that you're not right up on the road, but have a little bit of breathing room. And realistically, that road may never develop, but if it does, there's still a little bit of room there. I looked at some of the other units nearby. There was a, the big yellow house, which is one over. That one is currently zoned small apartment. You see that as the RM6 on here. I believe next door, the one, two, the R3 down there, those are single-story, but those are eight bedrooms is how they're listed on the assessor for the two houses right there. They're kind of in a duplex, fourplex model, but at a single-story height on there. I feel like I say a lot about all the houses I've lived in. I actually lived in a house behind this on College Avenue. And I can also speak to there being a lot of cars and parking being very, very vital of this area too. That house has since been torn down and I believe they're going to intend to build something that is three stories there. But, you know, if it's not actually done or applied for, we can't speak to that. But, so I do think something of the height does make sense in here, but I do also agree about the parking. So I hope that we can continue to work on these negotiations or have some solutions on there for the off-site parking to be provided. And possibly offering other incentives for your tenants to provide, not have a vehicle, some sort of a credit or maybe a additional parking fee that your tenants that are using one of those spots have to incentivize, maybe have somebody finding their own off-site parking. I think we could probably look for more solutions like that anyway for campus area to help reduce the number of cars. These particular units, I mean, I can't say they would never have a visitor, but they're probably going to be a single occupant. I don't know that we will see many couples in a place like this. Can never say never. You never know what people's situations are and then people will have visitors anyway. But those are just kind of some thoughts. I do agree that there is a legitimate parking concern here, but I think there could be some ways that you can do that. And I also lived in an apartment that was 400 square feet. And it was when I was working full-time and going to school full-time and I wasn't home much. And kind of having something like this, you don't see very many units like this in Norman, but I have lived in one in a very small unit and found it to be very functional at the life point that I was at as a young professional. So something like this would have probably fit pretty well into my life at one point too. So I, I do think that there could be some other uses in there besides the main point. But I also think probably students are very likely, maybe it's a graduate student, you know, so. Those were just some other things that I had seen on there and wanted to mention. Again, I would love to see some angled parking. It may not be doable. I would defer to the engineers in the city on that. But if there was any other way to have that or have the parking agreement in place for where those off-site units would be. Those were my comments, and if there's no other discussion for Planning Commission, I would take a vote.
Do, point of order, do we have a motion?
Oh, sorry. I would take a motion then. Start, start a vote. Anyone care to make the motion?
I move to approve.
And is there a second? Am I, am I missing something if we don't have a second on this item?
You can second.
Does the commission need additional discussion time to review?
I just have a question. And there was no pre-development meeting regarding this project. Is there a particular reason why that would, that didn't happen? That would allow more people who, who are concerned about this project and specifically parking and the congestion that's, will obviously be created.
Yeah, the pre-development meeting is not a requirement for this. You know, an applicant can request one, but they are not required, so that's why there was not a pre-development meeting held.
Thank you.
The land use changing is what triggers that, not necessarily all rezoning, so.
It didn't resound, yeah.
Well, I think I'm kind of on the same line, Jim here. Why wouldn't we have a pre-meeting if there's people that are, you know, why not reach out to, to the other group and say, hey, would y'all like to meet? The last ones that were here, there was a guy who came up and, and actually talked about that, that, hey, they reached out to us multiple times. They had us into the office so that we could negotiate, if you will. We could get some feedback. I think it would have been really good on y'all's part if, if somebody would have reached out. And that's where my concern is right now, between that and the parking.
I would allow that, yeah.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I'll just say that it was not required and we did not anticipate the protest. Had I known that that group was opposed to it, I would have met with them. And I will commit today to meet with them after this meeting, as we leave up to City Council, fully willing to hear the concerns and see if we can strike a balance.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll just say a little bit more. I think, I think what we're seeing are some growing pains as the city densifies. And you, you, there's a little friction with how things have been and, and that's hard and I understand that. You know, along the same lines, I look at this and there are some parks, you know, about, two parks about a mile away and we're going to pour a bunch of concrete here. And so maybe there's a need, if we're going to continue to densify, that we, that we have some pocket parks so that people have access to green space. Because I don't, I don't want to be voting no on densifying projects, but at the same time, people, people need to have access to, to some green. But that's, that's a bigger issue than just one development project.
If I could just add, just in the comments from some of the commissioners, the audience member that came to speak was actually a City Council member. It's not pretty often that we see them come speak in public comment, but that was a, something that's a little bit different about that particular audience member. I believe this project may be in Ward four, if I were to guess, maybe. Oh, thank you. Thank you. So Ward four would be Helen Grant is the council member that could also be reached out to, to help coordinate this by both developer and by audience members too, in the same way that it sounds like that council member maybe had taken a, a step into. So I encourage, I'm sure she'll read these comments, but encourage her to also maybe participate in some of those conversations too. And I believe also the protest arrived on Monday too, so just in context for getting those times in there too.
I, I have a question. It's a point of order question.
And then the other one I was just going to say was regarding green space. Things that are not able to be counted on here for green space and parks also include university property. So we had, Mr. Peacock, would you mind going back to the, maybe a slide that showed more? So things like the ovals that have kind of substantial green lawns that I've seen people playing football in. I don't know if we have one. It may have been in the city's slide where they showed some of the multifamily in there. So if you look here where our property is, you do see some substantial areas of green space with some of these other developments that are probably all university-owned too, that are not necessarily parks. So just a note for other types of green space that are still nearby too. And I know we have two other people that were going to make comments, so.
So, so my question is, I don't know if anyone else is feeling this way up here. But I would like their conversation to happen before it goes forward. And I know there's a motion. I don't know if they're, if we have to ask the applicant to change something, to revisit this. I don't want to shelve it and say no when there's the possibility of having lots of good discussion and, and really a finished product before us without limiting what changes could happen if it moves forward. Does that make sense?
So, and on a point of order, I believe that we don't have a true motion on the floor since it was not seconded. So there would be room for a different motion to be made, since there wasn't a second to that. So for example, to postpone or.
And to the November.
Yeah. I will, we can always ask one of our city staff to confirm maybe some of these additional options that we would have where we are with a motion made but not seconded, so as a point of order.
May I make one clarification?
Yeah.
Technically, this property is in Ward seven. Ward four is on the west side.
Okay.
Ward seven is on the east side of Chautauqua.
Thank you. Do we, I don't know offhand who the City Council member is.
Councilor of Loggia.
Loggia.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. That's very helpful. And then, yes, for our point of order, if you don't mind.
You would want to clarify on the record that the motion did fail for lack of a second, but yes, that would leave the floor open for an alternative motion. I wasn't sure if you had specific questions about the types of motions or, I'm happy to answer those if you do.
Are we able to make a motion to revisit it next month, like with a specific date? We're not wanting to table it to, you know, have it end. But I think a lot of us have concerns about conversations happening. Because I know if we, if it's approved and it moves forward, then there's not a lot of changes from their plat design that they can make without having to come back anyway, correct?
Right. And I would say that your options for motions, you know, with, with, with PUDs, you always have the option to approve with special recommendations, considerations, conditions, whatever you want to call them. So you can make your comments known on the record for that. Obviously, City Council always reads the comments from the record as well. I'm sorry, I feel like I'm not answering one of your first questions.
Well, just wanting to, I don't know. Are we able to make a motion to postpone?
Oh, right. So, okay, there are no specific provisions with respect to Planning Commission postponement policy. There was a somewhat recent amendment regarding City Council postponement policy that controls when and how that can happen more than once there. Really, historically, Planning Commissions and before this, the City Council followed the rule of generally, we let the applicant kind of guide what path they want to take based on that consideration. But of course, again, this is a recommended, a recommender revote.
Right.
So that's another reason why here that has kind of remained the practice.
Well, we should ask the applicant. If the applicant wants to have us postpone or go for an up or down vote.
I will be transparent and honest and say that we are trying to break ground in May of 2026. That is when the current tenants' leases are up and we feel that well, it gives us the runway to hit the next rental cycle. And so it would be our preference to keep this on the schedule it's on. However, I don't necessarily want to risk a rejection. I don't know that I got a great answer for you on that. I wish I had, I'm trying to speak for the developer, but I know he has his own timelines and I'm trying to respect that, but also respect the desires of Planning Commission. I'll just repeat what I said earlier, that I am fully willing to commit on the record today to meet with the groups, to meet with the protestors and see if we can find some common ground. And ultimately, I know that we have to gain City Council approval. And so if the heartburn is still there at the City Council meetings, I, stakes are a lot higher. I am going to do my professional duty to make sure I give us the best chance of City Council possible, which means I'm going to meet with them. I would very much appreciate a yes vote tonight with that acknowledgement that we will address these issues after tonight.
Okay, so point of clarification I'd like to add to this discussion. This is October 9th. In November, due to the holiday, on November 11th, there will only be one City Council meeting and that will be on November 25th. That would be first reading for this item. Then we would move to December, when again, there's only one meeting in December and that would be December 9th. So they do have an extended time that they would be able to meet with neighbors. So this won't be voted on at the second meeting in November. They'll have an additional period of time.
Would the first read still be November 25th, did you say? If, if we revisited it after their discussions at our November meeting? If, if the timeline's the same regardless?
If you, right, if you wanted it to go to the November 13th Planning Commission meeting, it could be a first reading on November 25th and then second reading on December 9th.
So that would be back to you as the applicant, but it sounds like your timeline is exactly the same as the first and second reads anyway, where.
I was actually under the impression that there was a 30-day after Planning Commission before it could come to City Council. Is there not a timeline between Planning Commission and City Council? Is there not a 30-day period?
It might be for postponing for Open Meetings Act. Beth, would you mind just confirming?
I'm so sorry. I did not hear the first of that conver, uh, question.
It's all right. I was under the impression that there was a, essentially it's the, it's not the next City Council meeting. It's the, it's a month following the Planning Commission.
So technically, if we didn't have the holiday in, on November 11th, that would be your first reading. But because there's a holiday, your first reading would be.
Even if the Planning Commission was on November 13th?
Yes, we could fast-track it.
Okay.
From the 13th to the 25th.
If that's the case, we're, we're much more open to it, just trying to stay on the same timeline that we've been on.
Thank you for helping work through some of those solutions. Also, just, I'm clarifying, it, it didn't sound like we were told specifically that we couldn't postpone, but have not historically postponed because we're a recommending body, just to, just to clarify, since that came up, if we can postpone or not.
My apologies for the confusion. I was.
My apologies for the confusion. I was seeking to address before more the issue of who is the one requesting the postponement? Should the PC be a body that puts it forward or does the applicant normally have input? And I was simply referencing that historically, there is that conversation with the applicant as to whether they're amenable to that or if whether they would opt to rather move it forward into the timeline. And that's what happened. So it sounds like you have the record for the path forward.
It sounds like we have one on this one, but just in as a follow-up item, if we could have a clarification on if this body can or cannot from planning commissions request forward, postpone an item? Or if we vote to approve or reject only in the recommending body? That we don't have to necessarily keep everyone's time today for that, but I would like that as a follow-up item for clarification.
I can do that.
Is that it? Dress the commissioners' concerns? Yeah. Thank you very much. Good solutions. I appreciate that.
So, so is the applicant requesting a postponement? Okay, so I need to make one more clarification. Are you asking, are you asking that the applicant postpone so that they can go to a pre-development meeting? Or are you asking that they postpone so they can have the opportunity to reach out to the neighbors and have those discussions?
And clarifying why for pre-development and for those meetings?
Because I can't. Yeah, it's not for a requirement at pre-development. It is to address the concerns that have been brought up.
Second.
And, and to see if they can, you know, because it's, it's very possible that after they have a conversation, what he would show us would be different. And so I just don't like the idea of forwarding this, having them have conversation and have what council sees be different than what we gave recommendations on or, you know, just depending on. And it could look exactly the same because I don't know, but.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
I will say that functionally, it will be the same project. I hope to have those parking agreements in place by that date, but it would essentially be the same 24-unit project with 21 parking spaces on site because we've, we've determined that's the maximum we can do. So the only new piece of information that I would probably be bringing would be discussion, seeing if there was some middle ground. Pretty much committed to the unit count, so I'm not sure there's a lot of wiggle room there. But nailing down the parking pieces, that's what we'd be working on.
Okay. Thank you for your candor.
I think in all fairness to the concerns of the neighborhood that's going to be across the street from this. And if your timeline, if you can post, make, have, make those meetings happen. Get, gather the information of the concerned neighbors and come to this meeting on the 13th. You're still going to make your first reading timeline. So I would be much more comfortable approving this after hearing the feedback. Maybe your, your project can't be amended at all or changed at all, but it would be nice to know that the neighbors around it can appreciate what you're, what you're wanting to do, see the value in it versus the controversies that can be created. I would be much more comfortable hearing it on the 13th, knowing that, okay, everybody around you had a voice. So.
And I don't think anyone is saying no to your project.
I appreciate saying that.
At all. I don't think that one bit. I think we just have this other concern now that.
Yes.
That someone is opposing it of some parts of it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Would the applicant like to request a postponement to the November 13th planning commission meeting?
I would like to request a postponement to the November, what'd you say? I'm sorry.
November 13th.
Planning commission meeting, please.
I move that we postpone to the November 13th, 2025 planning commission meeting.
Second.
Is there any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I would take a vote. Who?
I don't know who was first.
Pick one.
Pick one.
We all said second at the same time.
I know we did.
You may vote. All votes are 7 to 0.
Okay, moving on to miscellaneous comments and for planning commission and staff. Does staff have any information for the commission? Does commissioners have any comments to make?
Yes.
Okay, go.
Sorry, I've got several. I'll go real fast. One, it would be nice if the city, some options on recycling with poly carts and multifamily. Another is on the items seven and eight, I forgot to say, but I do want to bring it up. In their project, they had a lot of trees mixed in with their parking. And it would be great if we could encourage developers to continue to do this. Heat is going to become a big problem in the next several decades. And if they're planting trees now, it's going to knock back the heat in 30 years. And then the last one, which is going to affect my opinion on this project. You know, we've been pushing for infill development, which I think is great. But we, we're going to need an organized effort to manage green space. And so right now, having parks spread so far away, if we densified this whole section of the city, that's just not healthy for the community. And so the city needs to come up with a solution for this. This is not on any one developer. The city has to have a solution of pocket parks or something. I don't know. That's it. Thank you.
I had a comment I also emailed already, but I did love the formatting on these staff reports. It was requested for feedback, so very much appreciated the blue comments being italicized for staff comments, using the word consistent or inconsistent and bolding that and that the asterisks were only on the adverse comments. So great work from the planning department and I very appreciate, very much appreciate you taking time to take the commission comments into consideration and putting the attention into making those reports more user-friendly. So, thank you. Are there any other commission miscellaneous items? Are there any other miscellaneous items from the public? Seeing none, I would declare the meeting adjourned.